Don, will you lead us into our application?
Yes.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much, Lord, for all the blessings that you give us. Lord, thanks that we don't deserve it. We are so thankful. God, as we tackle your business tonight, Lord, I just pray that you'll help us to keep the citizens what's best for them in mind as we do the city's business. And we ask that you be with us on our way home, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Misty, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with good reason and justice for all.
All right. We'll convene our meeting, start with roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindeberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deanna McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Jimmy Conda.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made? Any motions?
The motion, we approve the agenda as mail.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from February thirteenth. Are there any changes or adjustments to those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as mailed.
A second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum, where we invite anyone who would like to address the council to come forward. Please keep all comments or questions directed toward the council. Please try to limit your time to around two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Yes, sir. Tell us who you are.
I must have already on the agenda, but I don't know if I'm jumping ahead. I've been on from Habitat.
Nope, don't have you on there.
All right, then, well, then I'm in the right spot. All right, well, hello, everybody. I'm Jeremy Conkel. I'm with Habitat for Humanity of Washington County, the construction manager, and just visiting you folks today. I'm a newer citizen of West Fork, but also our affiliate is for all of Washington County, and just wanted to come by and find out if there's any ways that we can collaborate for our community and to let you folks know that Habitat is doing repairs. So, you know, just hoping maybe to talk, you know, let the clerk know that we get calls in for people that have the water main that breaks, or hear about some needs in the community that a citizen has, that they think about Habitat as an option. We're helping those folks between that fifty to eighty percent of the AMI. And we've done some help in Springdale, Fayetteville, same with ramps. Do you know anybody that's in the senior, you know, that needs ramp or needs some home improvements? You know, Habitat is out there. And then, of course, we're always looking for land, so if we ever hear about any land or infill opportunities, you know, I've read a lot about different collaborations with cities and Habitat and different ways where maybe you guys have some land that you no longer need, and, you know, we're always looking for some infill so we can help the community, helps, you know, help the folks to, you know, better our community. It's a great city, but always room for improvement. So, you know, just last thing I would like to add, just to let everybody know, Habitat does not give their homes away. It's a usual common thing that we're just giving our homes to our homeowners, are dedicating three hundred, well, they're doing three hundred hours of sweat equity. They're out there at the build with me, building, watching their house go from the ground up, and then also doing classes. We have classes every month for everybody in Washington County. Tonight's a budget class, one of our more popular ones, as well as a car maintenance. So, always, you know, nice to have the community be a part of that, so if there's any way to share that. But they're putting in the sweat equity, and they're also paying the mortgage, which is just at a sliding scale that makes it affordable, thirty percent of their income. So, I just hope we can find a way to collaborate and maybe think of us if the opportunity ever comes in the future. Thank you.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm assuming that, like, repairs and that kind of stuff and upgrades or whatever, are they income-based?
They are, so it'd be sliding, yeah. And then their repayments are even on a sliding scale.
Right.
So, we try to take those payments really usually less than half of what the repair would cost. Habitat will forgive up to half of it, and then it's the other repayment is based, we could spread the payments, repayments back up to three to five years based off of their needs, and that's a zero percent interest as well, so.
Yeah, I don't know, it's been probably twenty years ago, but my mother-in-law had, and I don't know if it was Habitat or if it was something to do with the county, but they came in and, like, did windows and insulation, and it was awesome.
Yep.
She couldn't afford to do that stuff.
And we do repartner with all of the different organizations, SUCO, Ozark, for, you know, if somebody does get a weatherization inspection or assessment, that, and knowing what they need to have done, if there's things that they don't help cover, then exactly, that'd definitely be a way that we can help. You know, not only will we be building new homes, but we're trying to keep folks in their homes. I mean, that's the most important thing.
So, that's our program.
Give me cards or anything.
If you, you know, I might have to go grab them from the car, and I can bring them and maybe leave them at the end, but thank you. Yeah, yeah, forgot to bring those in.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jeremy?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
So Jeremy called me a while back and asked, we were talking about that. I wasn't aware that Habitat had one of those programs, and thought that would be good to come and share with the council, department heads, so we all be aware of what was out there. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports now that Chad's here. We'll start with planning commission. Walter.
Good evening. So we've had a little bit going on since last business report. We've had three meetings, one on February fifteenth, one on February twenty-second, and then one last night. The February fifteenth and one last night were special meetings with Juliet Ritchie, and we're getting close to being done with that. We've got a public hearing scheduled coming up to, on the, let's see here, where am I at?
March eighteenth.
Thank you, March eighteenth. There we go, yep, we've got our public hearing for that. And then, so we also have a special meeting scheduled for April eighth. Sorry, I skipped over that, and that is hopefully.
April eighteenth.
Or April fourth, because we, I saw, you had an email about that, April eighth is the eclipse, ten June. April fourth, I'm gonna get this straight for you guys. April fourth, we've got a special meeting, and that's kind of a chance for the public to come in and see, because we're getting close to final drafts on the Title XIV text. And so that's a chance for the community to come in and look at all the exhibits and what we're gonna present. And then, so the public hearing then on the eighteenth before our regular planning commission meeting, and if that goes well, we will be bringing that to you guys on your regular meeting in May. So that, and then other than our regular meeting, we had a guest speaker from the Watershed Conservation Resource Center, Sandy Formica, Formica, is how she pronounces it, I remember. She talked to us about the stream restorations, river restorations they've been doing. They're the group that did the part of the West Fork here just over by the sewer treatment plant, and I went and walked that in the middle of it. It's nice. I've, I've never been familiar with tow wood before, but that's kind of an interesting deal. But, yeah, so just what kind of practices we could do to help, because we're still maybe thinking about doing some kind of river protection, but that's still way down the road. But, yeah, we're moving along. If you want a better overview, come to one of our meetings.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Deanna, is there?
Or for Walter? No? Lot going on?
There is a lot going on, and we've got a PZD, PUD, Planned Unit Development. We've got a preliminary plat coming up on our regular meeting. I forgot to mention that. So, yeah, we're moving along.
So that ordinance is moving along fast.
It is.
They will have that special meeting first of next month, and then the public hearing at their regular meeting, but that, that new ordinance is one hundred and nineteen pages long. So we need to get a copy out to all of the council members, so you guys can start reading that. I know Jeff doesn't want to try to do that in one night.
He won't. And there's a sign ordinance with it.
There's a sign ordinance in there, there's a bluff overlay thrown in there.
Yeah.
There's changes, so all of our zones are changing.
We will have a new zoning map with some changes, some mixed use zones going in.
We're not, we're not limiting anything in any of the zones, we're expanding what can be done.
More options, yeah. Nothing less restrictive.
Definitely something that council needs to.
Nothing more restrictive.
To look at before it gets in front of us and we move it forward or make changes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anyway.
That's where we are.
All right. Thank you, Walter. Next, our court report. Tracy.
For the disbursement part, we were, our dispersals were down three thousand from last month and four thousand from last year. I was pretty happy, it was at forty-five thousand, and that was, that's a pretty good month, it seems like. I don't know if you guys paid any attention or not, but on the time pay part, on the graph part of the time pay balance, it went from like seven hundred and something thousand down to three hundred and fifty thousand something. We deleted a bunch of old stuff that was no, that we couldn't collect on and stuff to make the numbers a little bit more realistic. We're still working on that. It's gonna be an ongoing process to get a lot of that stuff taken care of. Our security monitor in there is all wonky, and we got a quote for that, and they told us five hundred and fifty dollars. I'm hoping that we can come up with a less expensive option. And the computer that we had fixed, like, we just got a brand-new computer for, all of our computers were new, and we're still having problems with the deputy clerk's computer, the video part of it. He thinks we may need a new monitor for that also. I don't know yet, we'll see. My clerk is leaving. She has turned in her notice, because Marriott Greenland is retiring, and so Jessica's gonna go take over her job. So I'm gonna be taking applications, I guess, and I'm trying to weigh back and forth to see if maybe two part-time people would be better than one full-time person, that that might use my budget a little better. And I have the judge's approval if that's okay with the city to see about doing that, so. And I don't think I have much else. We're getting ready to do trainings and stuff. I'm a little nervous about how many people want to, they'll need to go train, but anyway.
Any questions for Tracy? No? So, the state is looking at, at the court systems.
Yep.
And I think we may find we're on the cutting edge of some of the stuff Tracy's doing as we start looking into that. I think, just like Tracy's going through this and writing off some of that bad debt out of the court, I've talked to some of the other mayors about that, and it's, the court system has needed an overhaul for some time. And so the state has initiated that. I'm anxious to see how we, we fall into that and how it can help us, but I think it's good changes coming.
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to move, I'm hoping they're gonna complete the new court management system, whatever it's called. The software that we enter all our citations and stuff in. I think that the goal is ultimately that eSite, where we print our tickets from, will communicate with the new court system, and that's gonna be great if that happens, because there's so much room for error when you're trying to enter everything from one to the next, plus it will save a ton of paper. But, anyway, it, this time of paper and stuff like that. And we'll be able to, we should be able to e-file, which is also gonna make us a lot more efficient when we get on that. But I don't know where they're at on that. It's, it's a work in progress all the time. And I think they said they used ARPA funds. They, they were donated some, some of the ARPA funds to, you know, development.
To handle the processes, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, anyway, it's exciting.
It is.
I'm hoping they're gonna have the classic in this summer that I can go down there and see where we're at on the new software program and be hands-on and see what progress they've made.
Very good. Thank you. Next is our library report. Marie.
Happy time change. So I just wanna let everyone know, we do have eclipse glasses at the library. We are currently limiting it to two eclipse glasses per household, but if you wanna stop by and pick some up and get ready for April. We have Rachel Whitaker from the Shala Museum coming and talking about history of fabric of the Ozarks this month. And then next month, we're also probably going to be having someone from one of the weaving guilds come and talk to us, so it's kind of fun, a lot of fabric stuff going on. And then this Friday, we're going to be celebrating Pi Day, we're rounding it to the wrong number, but we already had plans on Thursday, so we had to kind of scoot it over to Friday. So Friday, if you'd like to come by and get a slice of pie at the library, from three thirty to five thirty, or until the pie runs out, we'll be setting the house. As you can see, we had a little bit of a decrease from last year on a lot of stuff. The numbers aren't super down, so I wasn't horribly upset about it. I'm kind of hoping for more numbers going up again this, this month. I guess not this coming month, but actually this month. But we did have a pretty good program attendance, and we are testing out some new programs, so we're trying to do more with tweens, and we're also trying to do a couple of new things with the adult programs as well. Does anyone have any questions?
So Marie, I think next year we should plan for Pi Day.
Yeah.
And have a contest, department heads and council members, to see who can memorize the most digits of pi.
Yeah, and also you have to bring a pie to the library to share.
I like it.
And have a pie-pie competition.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
How many digits do you know, Chad?
Three.
Three?
Three.
That's all you needed, though, Chad.
Digits or letters?
One, five, nine.
You don't need the rest of them.
I was gonna say, at least we know that's four and five, right?
All right.
I've been told there's more, but.
Next, Chief Halliburton, Police Department.
Good evening, Maricasa. In the month of February, we had a hundred and four calls for service, and we had three hundred and fifty-nine self-initiated calls. We wrote forty-seven citations, issued a hundred and twenty-two warnings. We served fifty-eight warrants and had three felony arrests and four misdemeanor arrests. In total, we had three hundred and sixty-five calls, which is actually down a hundred calls from last month. Unfortunately, we had an officer resign, so we do have an opening. We've already posted on N D and on Facebook. Got to get with Ellie tomorrow, and we're setting up interviews for three certified candidates that we had call or interested in the job already. We ordered a Dodge Durango twenty-twenty-four for our fleet. We were also fortunate enough to be donated a vehicle from the Sherwood Police Department, which we took possession of today.
Awesome.
We initiated, initiated a K-9 program, and the vehicle we got from Sherwood is a dedicated K-9 vehicle.
Oh, wonderful.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief Halliburton? No? Thank you, sir. Isaac's not here yet, we'll skip him.
I see him down in the ballroom.
Mm-hmm.
Jump straight to Chad since he showed up.
Yeah, we'll jump straight to the parking board.
I'm not real prepared, just didn't have that big ear this quick.
I didn't either.
It went, went, went quick, so. I just came from our coaches' meeting, so all our teams organized, coaches now have their rosters, they'll begin practicing next week. Still may add a couple of players where there's a couple of teams that still could use another player or two, but right now we're setting at two hundred and fifty-eight participants on twenty-two teams. So, practice will begin next week. I have my WCCL meeting tomorrow night to get all the teams throughout the league organized as well. So, it's up and running. High school's already played a few games down there. We've been blessed with some great weather, and so it's off to a good start. Our scoreboards have been installed. I think they're fabulous. I'm very, very happy with them. They're such an upgrade from what we had, and the, the sponsorships that we sold paid for, the scoreboards and the initial installation we did. The Parks Department at this point has paid for one sponsorship, so we're still trying to sell it, but we had some additional bracing that we felt needed after getting those things there and seeing how big they were. Went from a, about a six by fourteen, I think our old ones were, to a twelve by twenty scoreboard, so they got, they were quite larger. So we did add some additional bracing to make sure they're not gonna get blown down in a storm and things like that. So, but overall, the majority of it was paid for through our sponsorships that we sold, so that's, we're real, real excited and happy the way those turned out. We do have our stage. We did order and received, it's a temporary stage that we set up. I really like it. It's got a good look when it's set up. It's gonna be very, we haven't really broke down, set it up, and, and yet, so we, but the people we work from talk to it, and I know another one that has it. They are kind of heavy, but they're pretty, pretty easy to set up and take down. This one can be set up and left out. It's completely weatherproof, so there may be times of year that we set it up and leave it for a few months if we've got activities or things that are going regularly to use it, but we can break it down, we can store it, we can move it throughout our park system or town as needed as well, so we do have a stage. And I did finally get a date for the restroom, but I don't have a date, I have a ballpark timeframe of mid-April that our restrooms at Carter will be here and be installed. They, they got, for whatever reason, the, the plans got held up to get state approval. They just got state approval on the building this last week, so, but they're supposed to be here in mid-April. The pad is ready, our plumber's gonna come in and, and get the rough end plumbing and stuff ready. Electrical, we've been working with SUCO and getting that, the ball rolling on that, on, on getting power to them, also getting enough power down there to, to accommodate our stage and, and other future growth or things that we might want to do down there as well. So hopefully all that by mid-April will come together. And we got some other plans, I think I may have mentioned before, about adding a bike wash station and a, and a hub for bicyclists to come there and, and things. So we're gonna add some, some other things right there around those restrooms as well, so. And we started mowing, so. It seems early to me, but we've, we've worked on the last couple of days getting all the parks mowed, we're pretty much.
It looks good.
Thank you. It's, they was, it was weeds mainly, but it just didn't look good, so, but once you start, then it's, it's on, so. But I think that's it. I think that's all I got.
Any questions for Chad? Quiet council, isn't it?
Thank you.
Next, Chief Myers, fire department.
We can hear as long as Chad. So our call volume went down a little bit from previous month and even from any of last year, but I mean, we were any less busy. Um, for some reason, if you're like me, I got a whole bunch right through the fire part of it there. But at eighteen fire calls, we were, that's almost a third of the calls that we had. So it was really busy. My, put the burn band on, they're taking it off. Though we stayed a little bit, but they're still getting with it today, so. Next thing, anybody's to kind of discourage your burn in the next few days till it gets more right. Um, we're just kinda working on, probably updating some gear, some of our turnout gear, um, checking the ball running on that. Um, just saving lives and property, that's all we're doing.
Good job.
I wish I had decided, y'all.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Yep?
We like it when y'all vogue.
I just wish I'd been a fireman instead of a cop.
No, you don't.
Treasures report, Christie?
It is very early in the year, but as of right now, we have increased our bank balances by fifteen thousand this year and we are a hundred and forty thousand under budget. Our sales tax numbers for county and city have, uh, increased a little over four percent so far for the year. Um, the water department, we've actually decreased those, uh, bank balances by about fifteen thousand. Um, but that budget is seventy thousand under budget. Water loss is at twenty-four percent, which is really good considering we had a lot of, uh, leaks and such for the hard freeze time. Um, and then, of course, at the bottom, uh, so far, we are in the good thirty-two thousand, uh, for our sewer expenses to Fayetteville, um, and bond payments. Um, I do wanna point out one thing. I don't know if anybody, uh, saw it or not, but on your actual financial reports for the water department, um, there's an adjustment line on there under the revenue section that shows, uh, a negative of twenty-five thousand. Um, I just wanted to explain what that is. Uh, anytime we do, we, and just off a bill for if someone's had a leak or something like that, that's the line that it shows up under. We did have multiple bills that we gave adjustments to this year or this last month that, um, because they had prosopipes and had big leaks. Um, but about eighteen to nineteen thousand of that was actually from one meter that the meter was not functioning properly. Um, so those, that's not a real accurate number as far as true adjustments that we gave. Um, so eighteen thousand, that was just for an inaccurate meter that counted usage that didn't really happen, so. That's what that is. Um, other than that, I did want to mention that citywide cleanup, we're only gonna do one this year. Uh, we've had such low attendance that we decided we would try to just do one and see how that works. So that is scheduled for June seventh and eighth this year. So we're gonna try to get that out on the water bills.
June seventh and eighth?
Mm-hmm. Um, we typically do two days twice a year, so we're just gonna do the one this year and see, um, how that goes. It's open to change back to two days if we want to, but we'll, or two times a year if we want to, but we'll just see how it goes if we get some participation.
And what's gonna be your times?
Uh, typically on Friday, we're nine to three, I think. I don't know, Misty, honestly. I hate to say.
That's okay. I mean, I'd just like to text.
We'll advertise, yeah. We'll advertise it more as we get closer and I'll get times for you.
Any questions for Christian? So, before we sit down, I wanted to point out that Christie has, uh, so we had talked about that Christie was in a certified public managers program. And she has came to the end of that program. And part of that program was developing a, um, a project that she was gonna implement in the city. And so, uh, I talked about this at the department head meeting, cause I was so impressed with it. So I remember how many, was it thirteen pages? Yeah, thirteen pages of a program that Christie put together. But, so she stated in her, in her project, um, a program to address every year when we do our audits, when we do them every year, that, uh, we get deemed for, uh, lack of segregation of duties, cause we're, we have limited, uh, number of people and our internal controls are weak. But, uh, Christie's put together a program to, to address that. Um, she's, she's walked through potential pitfalls that she's gonna encounter with it. She's got a timeline put together for when this gets implemented and when it comes to council. Uh, she's, uh, gonna talk to Tom about a couple of things. So just wanted to highlight, she did a really good job on this. Uh, I've challenged all the other department heads, especially Chief Myers, to do thirteen pages. But, um, as far as putting together a project and goals, uh, she really thought this out. Uh, it's something that hits every department and thought it was worthy of congratulating her, so.
Someone pass my title.
Christie, I also, uh, received a phone call, or not a phone call, but actually sat down with, uh, the director of, uh, Washington County's Veteran Affairs. And I told him you'd been out of town, so he's gonna reach out to you. They're wanting to, they're wanting to use West Fork as a central hub for Greenland and Winslow. And basically get out the word that they wanna come down here and sit down, meet with veterans and just go over all of the, the potential options that veterans have and what the county supports. So I told him we'd find a time that they could use the community center and that you could get that scheduled. And then we'll try to get it out everywhere, just to let people be aware that, that we're gonna have that in West Fork. Um, they would like for, uh, the council to attend that if, if it's all possible. Um, but, so that should be coming in, in the next month or two. Kinda like Habitat for Humanity. They have a lot of programs I wasn't even aware of for veterans, so. That will be coming. Next, item D, new business. McClellan, um, reviewed bids on the Homestead project. So as everyone's aware, we've been trying to move forward on getting sewer to the Homestead subdivision between here and Greenland. And we met with McClellan today to go over, the bid opening was, uh, Friday morning. We did get, we did receive three bids and those are in your packet. Um, and so I'll let Nick discuss that a little bit and, and what we're up against there.
Okay. Sure thing. I brought, uh, Trent Williams from our office too. He's our project manager for the project. I keep telling, telling y'all he's gonna show up, but he, he came tonight, um, so this is all his fault now, um, one that created his mess. So, yeah, I'm up here, I know you mentioned earlier today, it's, you know, we're prior projects and everything, always used to opening bids and everything's good and under budget. Well, this one, I think we, we identified before bid opening, um, but, but, uh, unfortunately, yeah, the, the project is over budget in terms of what was allocated for funding. We had, uh, two point two four million total allocated for this project. And the low bid, um, is about one point nine three eight million. So, you know, we still have to account for engineering, easements, contingencies and the like. So, um, we were pleased with the bids. We felt like we got good bids. Um, two of the three bids were very close together and we feel like it was a competitive bid. And it was actually quite a bit lower than we thought it would come in at. We, we were, we were expecting prices two and a half plus million based on recent bids we've been seeing in the area. It's just the market's been very competitive and contractors are busy and, and throwing some high numbers out there. So we were happy with the numbers that we got, but nevertheless, we're still in a situation of, there's not enough money there. So as Mayor mentioned, we, we met today. We've been in discussions with, with the funding agency, um, on what, what's next. And they, um, I did ask the question, first question was, is there any grant money available? You know, is there any more ARPA money? Cause we're getting some ARPA money. Is there any principal forgiveness? And I got two resounding no's that any additional funding would come in the form of a low interest loan, um, borne by the city. So, um, based on a revised budget, I've put together, we're looking at, I think originally the city was committing to a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar loan. So with the new numbers, we're looking at a loan of more on the order of one point one million. So it is a pretty significant increase there. Um, so letting everyone kinda digest that. It's, it's a big number, not, it's, and, and like I said, I don't like sitting up here talking like that because I haven't, haven't had to. But we've encountered that on several projects over the past year that, that has this funding. Um, so like I mentioned, we're working with the state right now. They're doing a rate analysis. They're looking at West Fork's, you know, revenues, expenses, um, counting for the new recent rate increases the city has implemented. Um, their first pass at it was, was way off, so we had a good discussion today. We're hopeful to get, uh, better numbers in the next couple of days that, that seem more reasonable. Um, so what else can I, you want me to say to that, I guess?
No, we'll let them digest a little bit and discuss. We'll probably have some more questions.
We don't actually have the payment work in front of us. It wasn't in our packet.
No, it just, uh, uh, I just got the email a few minutes before I came up here today. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you say one point one million would be the loan that we would have to take out?
At this point, we're, we're in discussions. I did get some numbers from, from the improvement district. So I've reached out to the, uh, Washington County Improvement District, number one. They're, they're, they oversee the Homestead addition. Um, I did get clarification on how much, um, they still owe on their system. Cause part of the budget was to pay off that debt service, cause they're paying, all the residents pay that as taxes every year. Um, so that number is a little lower than I anticipated, not by much, but, um, about thirty thousand from what we originally assumed. And I also asked them, how much money do they have in the bank? Cause we might be asking them to contribute as much as they can to help pay for the project. And it sounds like they've got about forty thousand right now. Um, they've gotta commit about ten thousand of it this summer, but more discussions we had there. But they're, they're aware that we're coming to them and asking them for some, whatever assistance they can provide, since, since the project would be benefiting their, their neighborhood. So I'd like to say that one point one million is, is a, on the high end. Um, you've got contingencies in there, kinda, you, if y'all remember with the big, big sewer project, we carried contingencies where we got towards them. We were actually able to do more projects because of that. In this case, unused contingency would just be un, unencumbered loan. We wouldn't have any extra work to do out there. And we're already in discussions with the contractor about some potential cost-saving opportunities. They have some ideas for us. I can't quantify how much, but any, any little bit we're gonna do to squeeze that down, so.
And how much contingency do we have in that?
Um, right now with my new,
Do we build in?
With my revised budget, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, that's a little more than ten percent of the, the base bid. I usually like to carry about ten percent and we can squeeze that down a little more before closing. But, um, I like to have that just in case. There's always those what-ifs that could happen. But if it doesn't get used, the city doesn't take on that, that debt. You know, basically we go through the end and, um, whatever the final cost is, is what the, the loan is.
So a couple of things to keep in mind, uh, when Nick put this initial estimate together, they were using numbers that they had at the time. And, and so, um, with this, you know, this thing is funded with, uh, federal and state forgiveness dollars, um, that have to be contractually spent by a certain date. So we knew this was coming, uh, many years ago, that every city in the nation is trying to spend this money, uh, by a certain date. So that's, that's ramped up, uh, cost for all the material. Uh, one contractor was, uh, two million dollars higher than the other two in this. They obviously have too much work and they gave us a complimentary bid. But, uh, so, so I just, I wanna point out that it wasn't that Nick's numbers were bad. He was using the numbers he had at the time, but as they went out and got bids for current pricing, things have skyrocketed. Um, one of the questions we asked today when we met was, what's the payoff to the city? Uh, so how many years until we recoup what we've had to, to expand to do this? And, and, you know, that can help drive decisions, but I believe it was ten years roughly.
It's about a ten year.
Based on what we would be charging, uh, those, those residents of that subdivision to, to tie into the sewer. So they're gonna be sewer only, um, and we would just be, we'd be charging them a flat fee. So our sewer rate schedule, uh, uh, it doesn't take into account how much water they use. It's just a flat rate for each one of those residents every month.
Do we know what kinda rate that's gonna be?
It's a hundred and twenty-four dollars is what it's currently structured at. Now that's, that has, um, yearly three percent increases in it. We also have to do a rate study analysis, much like Fayetteville did, that increased our rates. We have to have one of those completed by year twenty twenty-six. And we are talking about getting that budgeted for year twenty twenty-five to get that implemented. Um, so that we can make adjustments to that if, if necessary, uh, on, on the rates that they're paying there. Uh, the other side of this is, uh, this loan portion of this, we would not start paying on it until year twenty twenty-six, correct?
Yeah, until the year after.
Did I understand you say that they were way high on what they think we should pay, or they're just way off on what they think we should pay? Like, like they were on the estimates they gave us before on some of our other stuff?
Yeah, they're, they're just, they were just way off. And it was way high and they were way off. We, we worked through it today and they were double accounting your loan for your big project and debt service. They were, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars high on your current debt service. They were low on your annual billable gallons. So I don't even wanna say the numbers they said it need to be, but there was, we saw them as like for, and that was on a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar one. I said, no, this isn't, this isn't right. There's something wrong. So we've hopefully straightened them out and probably take a couple more iterations with them to get it there. But, but we ran, we penciled the numbers today, just, it's, it's simple math, revenue and expenses. And just straight up with your current, with your new rates in place, I think we're estimating, um, just straight up a shortfall around a hundred thousand, a hundred to two hundred thousand a year. And that neglects any, um, shifting of funds from, from, you know, from the sales tax fund over to water and sewer that y'all have been doing for several years. So that's just straight up with Homestead included in there, so.
But that would be for the whole system?
That's for the whole system.
Including Homestead?
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't even factor in any monies being allocated from sales.
Cause in theory, Homestead should be profitable right off the bat.
That's what I was thinking. What about Fayetteville? Can, what can they do with us with Homestead? My concern is, you know how they like to jump in and raise things? I mean, you know, if we tell them it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-four dollars and then it comes to two hundred dollars, what are we gonna do? It's my question. Do we, have we thought of that? I mean, I'm sure we have, but.
Yeah, so we feel confident that our rates are locked in with Fayetteville for a period now. They've done a rate study analysis, which is the driver behind that. So I, I don't think we, we will, you know, anything can change. But, uh, we should be locked into sewer rates for, what, the next ten years? Is that?
Probably five to ten years. Another part to revisit the studies every five years. I think six oh five has that, but as long as it took them to get this one study done, I think they, they put a lot of, a lot of work into it. So, um, so I think we can guarantee five years before they dust it off. And it might take them another two or three years after that to finish another study, kinda like the last one.
To figure it out, simple math. So a couple of things that, that we talked about were, uh, initially the state came in, they looked at those numbers and they said, well, you're gonna have to raise your sewer rates if you're gonna take this on. And that was our point of contention, that why would we be raising rates? Uh, why would we, we be raising rates on West Fork citizens for the Homestead subdivision? Uh, and so that was kind of a, a non-starter, which Nick and his team went through. And, uh, the state sent this really nice worksheet, uh, of how they came to this conclusion. And Nick almost completely covered that worksheet in red lines, saying, no, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. So I think that's, that's something we need to talk about. One, I don't know that the city's interested if we're gonna have to raise rates, okay? Uh, and two, uh, this is all still contingent upon us receiving funding, right? So whatever we decide tonight, uh, I think those two things are, um, kind of set in stone. We want, I say, I should say, I want us to take on that system. I, I would like to add those eighty homes to our system. Uh, it's good for West Fork. It's, it's good for the river. It's good for the environment. It's good for the citizens of Homestead. But at the same time, I'm not willing to ask the city of West Fork to put forth any more money on their sewer bills.
They've already been taxed pretty hard for that.
That, yeah.
Didn't they get annexed into Greenland?
They did.
They did. Uh, now, I don't know that that was their choice.
I think it was a voting.
It, it was a voting thing that encompassed the entire city. Uh, so if, if you talk to some of those residents, a lot of them aren't happy about that, but yes, they are Greenland residents. For, for us, one of the things we need to consider though is we have two point two million dollars of free money, roughly. Um, we knew the state was gonna make us borrow two hundred and eighty thousand to put this in. With the, the cost overruns, we're looking at borrowing another eight hundred thousand, uh, to finish the project. With a ten-year payoff on a thirty-year system.
Mayor, I'm gonna add to, and we, um, like this afternoon, we had, trying to have one of our young engineers look at the, what we talked about with the sewer there. If it could be taken under seventy-one and, and, and across the highway and, and it's very feasible. So there's, there's that aspect of it too, of, you know, Homestead, if it is in Greenland, but the other side of the highway, there's potential to have a West Fork sewer main that, that extends and, and opens up.
So if you guys think about,
In the future on that, on the, uh, I guess it'd be on the east side.
East side. So if you think about the, the placement of that, one of the things I'd asked Nick was, will this, will this system be sized enough so that the old salvage yard across the street, if that were to be developed, could sewer come across the street, tie into this?
That would be the time to plan this.
Right. So I don't know if that got annexed, if that piece got annexed or not. There wasn't many people in that area, so my guess is no. What other thoughts and concerns?
Well, I, I still wanna do it as long as we're not asking our residents to foot the bill.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, I don't, I don't mind that West Fork is sponsoring it and we take care of it and all that. But we, there's no way we can ask our residents to pay more money for them to have sewer.
Yeah.
I just, I, I wouldn't feel like I was doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
I mean, our residents are already up in arms of, at what they're paying now. So to have to raise it again, you know, just because we.
Well, none of us wanted to raise anything in the first place.
No, we didn't.
You know, but we had to.
It's not our decision.
But then to face, having to raise it to do that, uh, I don't know how we can do that. I couldn't. My conscience says no.
So is the council on board with taking on the additional, uh, loans in order to complete this project with those contingencies?
I think so.
With the contentions that we're not gonna raise rates for our residents, is that what you're?
Yes.
So long as it's not gonna affect our residents, I'm all for it.
Are we, we're already though having to take money from, like, sales tax revenue to pay the loans we have now, correct?
So we have the last couple of years?
More, we would have more debt that we're having to borrow from other places to potentially pay this too? Am I understanding this correctly?
So, yes and no.
Okay.
So with, with this last increase of sewer, um, we actually reduced the amount that we're having to, to supplement that, uh, that fund. And so what we're saying is with this, the expectation is there would be a need for a hundred thousand dollars of sales tax money to make up the difference.
In a year.
Which is less than we've utilized for the last two to three years.
But still, it's our sales tax.
Absolutely.
For their stuff.
Yeah.
There's, is there any chance the state could come back and say, you have to redo your rate for all of you?
So that's what we're, that's what we're saying. We need that, that set out before we approve this.
I still think it's a good investment, but it's an awful, not to say it's an awful, it's just an awful big difference.
Sure.
And I get how you get to that from, you know, where you're at. It's a lot of money. I think in the long run, it would pay off though, if you could swing it off.
Probably.
So, and we'll talk about it as long as you guys want, and definitely wanna get the questions asked. But the, uh, the item of business is to accept the bid, the low bid that we received, contingent upon funding.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to accept the low bidder on the Homestead project, contingent on state funding.
State funding, not contingents, we get a loan?
Well, it's contingent upon funding of the project. So if, if we're not gonna get that forgiveness money, then this project's a non-starter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how much are we gonna have to pay out?
How much a loan are we?
How much loan are we gonna get?
Yes.
Like, how much total loan are we gonna have to get to do this project?
Yes.
That we have to pay back? A million, one?
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought I had on my paper.
1.1 million.
Yeah. Saving up these contingencies are all, it could end up being 900,000, or a million, or 800, it's. Kind of, I've got some, a little bit of wiggle built into that budget, just wish I'd had that from the get-go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a much easier discussion then.
Yeah. Okay, with us possibly going over to the east side of the highway, would that increase the numbers then?
So we wouldn't go across the street?
It would stop there, but it, but you have the potential with the, with the topography and, and location of all the things. It could, that line could be extended in the future.
Okay.
That would be like another improvement district or something?
That'd be something, if the city, you know, be like a capital project, or you get a developer that could.
The developer would most likely be.
Say they wanna put 50 or 100 homes on the east side. I mean, I think in terms of capacity, I think.
We, we looked at 50.
Yeah, we looked at 50 homes and we're still only at 30% capacity in that system we're putting in with those 50 additional homes. So there's, there's, there's room in that system, and an eight inch can carry quite a few homes.
Yeah, if that's only at 30% capacity, then you're easily, you can add a lot more houses in the future.
There's still agreements planning area though, so they have better chances of annexing that in as well, so it'd be the same.
Well, they're the same way.
Can I ask a question? What, what are the maintenance costs on all the pipes and meters? I mean, would maybe, would West Fork be in charge of all the maintenance of all those pipes?
Yeah, the, yeah, see, West Fork would own the, the pipes and the manholes, but it's, there's no meters. It would just, it's a gravity sewer system, so right now everyone out there has a, a pump and a tank. So it goes, goes into a tank and gets pumped into a pressure line that goes up to a little treatment system. So they would be on what we call conventional sewer, just like everyone here in town that's on sewer, flush a toilet. And goes, goes away by gravity and connects into the line that we just built, what, three, four years ago? Or three years ago? So it'd be, so the, the maintenance on a system like that is periodic inspection of manholes, cleaning if needed. When it's brand new, it doesn't need a whole lot of maintenance luckily. But there's no moving parts or anything that have to get replaced or repaired. It's, it's all, I guess, static in the ground, buried utilities.
Have we told Homestead that we're, it's gonna be $124 a household? Have we told them that?
I believe they're aware of that, yes.
Is that monthly or yearly or?
That's monthly.
Monthly, and, and how, I mean, how, I mean, I might.
They made quite a bill right now.
Do they?
For their system.
So they have to pay a maintenance fee on top of, to, to keep that plant running.
Right.
So the 124 is, I think, the last time we looked at it, is a little bit higher than what they're currently paying, but only like $10 a month, $15 a month is what they're currently paying.
Did you know what they were paying and not hate for them to all go, no, we're not gonna do that after we go through the.
No, I think they're all on the other side of this.
Yeah, they kinda need to do something. I know they do. Yeah, I know, I know.
So one of the other things West Fork's asking for in this is that we get the, the property that that system sets on. Now, I don't know if we're gonna get that, but the improvement district currently owns that. But we're gonna ask.
I believe they.
For that corner?
I'm sure they.
That lot?
It's 2.8 acres.
That's their leach line, everything on the north end.
And I think that's something we're gonna look into, you know, as far as the condition, if the city could retain ownership. And I think more importantly, any restrictions on that property, once the plant is, cause the treatment plants contained a small area where they actually, all the mechanical stuff, but then the, the open field is, is almost like septic lines, you know, strip irrigation. So if that gets decommissioned and closed, can that property be redeveloped in the future?
After it's cleaned up, probably.
After it's cleaned up.
How much is that all?
Like I said, when we, when we did the, we did the big project here and decommissioned the plant, you know, there was a deed restriction place that, you know, for, for y'all's sake, but you had two large ponds and a lot more going on. So I don't know what the rules of engagement are, you know, there, but but the city retaining that property would pose some, some value, if, if the land can be used, for sure. So we're gonna try to find that out from the, from DQ, see what their thoughts are there.
So you're gonna know that before we do this?
So I'll try to find out real quick. Tom, I don't know if you've had any experience.
No, it's all happening right now. Literally right, it's happening all around, I mean, the golf course in K, the heights. I mean, all these things are starting to happen, so no one knows quite yet what's gonna happen. Of course, they're all being maintained at different levels, right?
Yeah.
There's gotta be a way to reclaim it though. What's, what would be the cost of it? It would be the big time.
Yeah, I think, I think if it's drip field lines compared to, you know, buried equipment and structures or ponds, that's, that's a different.
They're not very deep, they don't do very much.
No.
So for eight to 10 years, we would be using taxpayers' money to foot a bill. But then after.
Not necessarily.
Well.
You know, that's what free money is anyway, it's taxpayer money.
There's no such thing as free.
There's no stamp, yeah. It ain't free, somebody's paying.
No, it's not free.
So what we're saying is for 10 years, it's gonna take 10 years to recoup that million dollars. It's, it's a, it's a 20-year loan for a million dollars. The thought process being the revenue that it pays in would pay the project off in 10 years.
And you would be chasing faulty sewer lines that's been there for 20 years.
Right, it's all brand new.
It's all brand new stuff.
So then.
So your INI wouldn't start until after those 10 years after the loan's already paid off? And, I mean, not your INI, but the majority of your fixes.
Hopefully you don't have INI in sewer water.
Maybe never.
But after 10 years, it would start paying us back. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, theoretically, it would be all profit after that point, yes.
What is the considered a low interest rate from the state?
Right now, the, the rate they've, they've committed to is 1.75%. So that was, that was the, the rate they had last year with the, when they did all the principal forgiveness or grant money we got with this. They were offering that low interest loan, and they're, they said they would honor it for any additional funding too, that they would.
That's great.
Lock in there. Something else we talked about was potentially a 30-year loan. Instead of a 20, they would consider that, that bumps your rate up to like a 2.25, but then lowers your payment a little bit too. I mean, I think we calculated on that loan, it would be, you know, 15, 15,000 a year difference. So it may not be worth it if you gotta pay off it for 10 years. But, yeah, and just, yeah, for order made too, I think it was around 65,000 a year for, for paying off a 1.1 million loan. Just, just so y'all have some rough numbers on, you know, cost.
So when, when would you know about, if the property's included?
So Nick is, Nick is digging on that right now. If, if we vote to accept this bid, contingent upon funding, we will, we will have to have a special meeting between now and the end of the month to move forward. So there's, we, yes, so there's a lot of information that has to come in a very short period of time. But we have till March 31st to have this contract, contractual spend?
Or committed, yeah. There, there was, yeah, we had a, we had a meeting with, with the funding agency last Monday. Christie and I and Trent and, and, cause they had been silent for months, you know, they, they awarded the money and we've been asking for input and memorandum of agreement, if y'all remember that. We, we, we got a memorandum of agreement finally, and they gave us like a week to fill out dates and gave us a list of A through R of things we were missing. Now we're down to two items in a week, which we had all, but they just weren't communicating, so. With the ARPA money, yeah, the March 31st deadline they're sticking to, as far as, they originally said we should have the loan closed by then, which isn't possible, but they want the commitment from the city before then that they've, if they, if they can't get a commitment for the ARPA money, they need to reallocate it to others and try to get it committed before December 31st. So that's why they're sticking pretty hard to that March 31st deadline. Cause I think they're, they're obligated to, if they don't commit those funds, by then they, it goes away, so. But I think they're, they're working with us after we had some tough discussions and.
Yeah, remember they oughta answer the phone.
Yeah, well, we, we brought up a few things of, things that have been, questions asked since August that have gone unanswered. And then, and then the team changed a little bit, well, we can work with you.
So we're gonna vote?
If everybody.
You got a motion in a second.
I just wanna make sure everybody's got their questions answered before we, before we move it on.
So we're voting to accept the bid as long as we get the money. So basically, if we vote yes, we're voting to move forward with this project.
Correct.
Hang in there.
Do what?
Hang in there.
Based on getting that money.
She gonna sleep tonight.
Might wanna do roll call.
It's just a lot of money.
It is.
It is a lot of money.
For, for something that isn't part of our city.
Might wanna do roll call. But eventually it's going to help our city, because it's gonna give us more revenue to help.
I'd just point out, it sure worked pretty good for family.
Oh, yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
For sure, every meter we add.
Is that everything? All right, we'll do a roll call. So we have a motion in second to approve the bid on the Homestead project, contingent upon funding. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dana McNight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condiv?
Yes.
So we have seven yeses to one no, that motion carries. As I said, we, well, if this goes through, if we get everything that we're, we're needing, we will probably the week of the 25th be looking for a special meeting. Okay?
And also as long as it doesn't raise the rates of our citizens. That's in there too, understanding, okay?
That's a hard no on that, yes. Okay. Thank you, Dana. So item two, approved bids on interest rates. So in your packet, you see that we've put out rates again to the two banks and city.
I make, I make a motion that we approve those.
I second.
The Bank of Fayetteville bid.
Is that the one we should go with?
Yeah, that's the one we should go with.
So I have a motion to approve the bid from the Bank of Fayetteville on interest rates.
Second, can you vote on that?
And a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Just so everyone out there knows what we're talking about. The city, the city put out a bid request for the banks to see which banks would give us the best interest rate on our operating accounts and some money we have in CDs. The winning bid was an offer of four, no, five, what was it? 4.5% on operating accounts and 5.05% on CDs. And that was the Bank of Fayetteville that won that. Item three, I need a motion to transfer funds from the general fund money market to a certificate of deposit.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Item four, to transfer funds from the street fund money market account to a certificate of deposit.
I have a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item five, approve up to $35,000 from street reserves to purchase a new vehicle. Isaac's had some vehicle problems and is needing a new one. And so we're looking to take that out of the street fund reserves that we have.
You already tearing that truck up?
No, no.
Not yours?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Just a pickup or?
Yeah, so this will be replacing our oldest vehicle, it's a 2006.
But it's just a pickup, not a?
Yeah, it's just a pickup.
Okay.
Yeah, not a big truck.
Not a big truck.
I wish. All right.
I'll make a motion that we go for it, because I mean, that's what reserves are for.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item E, other business, update on Friar versus West Fork. So the update on that, we had that lawsuit brought against the city for a citizen who we arrested. And we settled that lawsuit out of court. The city's portion for that settlement was $3,500. Is there any other, other business? Mayor's comments. So, something to bring up for council to discuss a little bit, it's still daylight outside, so we haven't been here that long, Don.
You look at your watch.
Something I wanted to bring before the council to, to ponder. We have a special meeting most likely coming up at the end of this month. There's a piece of property that came up for sale, that I wonder if the council is interested in.
Where's it at?
It borders Riverside Park, it's the little yellow house down there on the curve.
John Kennedy's?
Yep. That went up for sale, I've been following it with Jan Newland. There was an offer went in on it, it came out, so it's still available. It's for sale for 219,000. It's three acres.
What would we do, buy it and tear the house down?
I don't know, there's been, so when I talked to Jan about it, she said, that'd make a great museum. I don't know if we need a museum, but make a great one. Certainly adds to the park, that park is limited somewhat in parking. It's a, you know, that's probably the park, well, I don't say it gets the most traffic, but it gets a lot of traffic and has less parking, so it, it would give options for that. It would give options for a little bit more control right there by the park for what's happening. Initially, I would've been really happy if we could've just gotten a piece of it, but they weren't, they weren't willing to split.
Did you say 235,000?
219, I believe, was what it was.
19,000 for three acres?
Three acres in that house, yeah.
Does it have water and sewer? I mean, you might be able to sell part of the habitat.
He did in flood zone.
Yes.
It's got a really nice wooded area that borders. I mean, I've been thinking, this would be so great if it could be part of the park. If you walk around that trail or the new section, you can see their property and they've got, there are hawks that live in there. I mean, it's a, it's a nice little piece of green space.
It's not something we have to do, it's just something I, I thought was worthwhile bringing up to the council. It's not something we'd be able to wait on forever, so it'd be something we needed to, to make a decision between now and at least the next special meeting, yeah.
Could be a good idea.
Thoughts from the council?
So that's the Yoh House and the, the, the three acres is that field behind it as well, correct?
That goes down to the fence that hits the park.
Do you know how much of that wooded area it is behind that field?
Behind the yard?
Is all that, is all that wooded area ours already?
No.
Okay, so that goes all the way back?
It goes back to basically our sidewalk, it comes around by the pavilion, so it, it splits. If you walk down by the swing sets and stuff, it's all the property. And then we own the property on the other side of it, so it.
Right.
We own the property on both sides, theirs goes down the middle.
So it would be feasible to expand the parking through there and include that three acre law? And make it a three acre parking lot, per se?
Personally, I wouldn't wanna make it all parking, but inevitably some of it could be used for additional parking.
Yeah.
And it could, not necessarily even connected to the current parking lot, but. And it could, not necessarily even connected to the current parking lot, but an additional lot.
Could be.
Could just be.
Then you may never get another opportunity at that point.
That's true.
And you said they wouldn't split it?
Can the city split it and sell the front house and stuff off?
Good. The habitat.
I, I think the.
I mean, we're not.
The opportunities are unlimited at that point.
Condemn those two.
We, we would be able to get the easements that we, we would require.
First, they would be to get it.
Parks off, that's what we get, showers. Needed one before it came. Probably that Isaac. He came from work in the ball fields as well.
And just food for thought, we don't know what's going to happen with the driveway from, from the park now with the new bridge, how that's all going to.
And it's true.
Yeah, it's true.
That could be ten years from now.
Twenty twenty-six.
Boy, how long's it going to take to replace stop sign? Rock Creek was already supposed to be underway.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Donnie, replace that stop sign. I'll watch.
It'll take me three months to bring me a drainage box there, so.
All right, John, it's getting late.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
But wait a minute.
You said, that's my deal. You're, we're not voting on that tonight, are we?
We need to vote, if we need, if we want, if we're interested in making an offer on that, yeah, we probably need.
I thought that was going to be at the special meeting.
I think at the special meeting, we'll probably be discussing how to move forward.
Make a motion to make an offer.
Second.
What's, what are leaving? One team? What is it listed?
June ninth.
Two nineteen.
How much was your offer for?
What I offered?
Yeah.
Two million?
That'll work. I'll second Jeff's offer.
Turn a kid flag. Am I out of bounds yet?
No.
No?
You're all way in bounds.
Okay, so we have a motion in second to make an offer on that for two hundred thousand.
And we're allowing you to make the offer?
Okay, so before we move any further, Christie, can we do that?
She's shaking her head, you.
Say yes, or does she say no?
All right, so let's give a, a vote on that. We have a motion in second to make an offer on the house down there by the river for two hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Who was my second? Who seconded the motion, John?
I can't, it's a doggy.
Jeff, we can make.
Okay. So, uh, that's all the exciting major comments that I had, other than.
Okay, make a motion when you adjourn.
Not yet. So we do have a new subdivision coming for Planning Commission, uh, at their next regular meeting. That's going to be up on the bluff on that six acres again. Roughly the same as what came prior to that with a few modifications. Smith Street.
Different people?
Different people, yes. Uh, Smith Street is ready to start, they're same as ready to start construction. So they may start building a few houses before they get their final plat. That's on them if we don't approve it. But they're having trouble, half of that subdivision is Ozarks Electric and half of it is SWEPCO.
Of course.
Uh, SWEPCO has not got the power in yet, and so that's holding them up doing a final plat. So they may start on the backside of that with a couple houses to get some construction started. And then we spoke about it a little bit, but we do have two different developments looking at that property on the west side of Harps parking lot, between one seventy and, and that bluff line back there.
Does Harps have to agree?
Yeah, that, that's what the holdup is currently, is getting Harps to allow them to, to put it in there. So Harps had a covenant to put on that property when they initially bought it. And so that's, that's the holdup right now is getting their approval, but there's two different developers asking for approval on that.
And this might be late, but I see that the co-op's property for sale, it's got a sign in the front.
Yeah, uh, so the co-op property transacted for two hundred thousand dollars and after the developer asked us a couple of things about, that he might put on there, it went up for sale for a million.
Yeah.
So.
It could return.
How many acres is that?
Fifteen, twelve, I don't remember now.
Two hundred?
It's what he bought it for.
Yeah, that's good.
It's like fourteen something.
For sale now.
Okay, with that, John.
Make a motion.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Let's do second.
Did you get a second, Misty?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.